Great. I'd like to call to order the February 4th Milford City Council meeting. I'd ask that you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence. During that moment of silence, please keep the families of the victims of the American Airlines tragedy in your thoughts.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Mayor Evans. Vice Mayor Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain.
All right. Do I have a motion to excuse both Mayor Evans and Ms. Chamberlain?
She'll move.
Second.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right. Next up in proceedings, we have approval of the council meeting proceedings from January 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Uh, she'll move.
Second.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Next up, financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the December 2024 finance report?
I'll make that motion. Just with the one caveat, in there, they talked about the House bill, which would have changed the pension. Uh, it's something we don't need to worry about at this time. It did die in committee. It was voted out of the House, but not voted out of the Senate. So just a point of clarification, that that will have no immediate effect on, on our budget. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Uh, next up, public comments. Do we have any members of the public that'd like to make a comment? Please come on up. All right. Uh, just remember, please state your name and address for the record.
Dan Whitaker, 49 Mound Avenue. Um, this is mostly just a plant the seed comment. For me, I did send an email to the city manager and to Mayor Gunderson's, or city manager Gunderson's office about the condition of Railroad Street. This, to me, is a slightly unique situation compared to what I know some complaints about the alley conditions have been. And given that Railroad Street used to be referred to as an alley, it's now being referred to as a road. Its condition is poor. I have pictures if you'd like to see, but also, um, the most important factor is that it's not in the right location. The GIS, which, uh, was used multiple times in reference to where the street should be, uh, shows that the majority of the remaining pavement is actually on private property. And where the pavement should be is now mud. So, not in great shape. If anybody would like these pictures, um, I could...
I would mind, yeah, if you don't pass them around, yeah.
Thank you.
Those were emailed to your office as well. So, mostly this is kind of a fact-finding mission for me, plant the seed, and then see if it makes sense to, uh, do more of a formal presentation for any actions that may be required. Um, happy to do more homework.
Is your property butt up against, is that what, yeah?
It is. Forty-nine Mound is...
Right before the stop sign, right? Is that where you are?
Uh, there's no stop sign. Uh, Railroad Street is adjacent to my property.
No, no, I meant, I meant the, the next stop sign up. So you're before Railroad?
Yeah, I'm about halfway, uh, between Oak and Mill.
Okay, gotcha.
On the Riverside. And Railroad Street goes down next to my property and makes that 90-degree turn that you see there for the new construction at 57, I believe, was the, uh, address given to Railroad Street.
How, how long, now, I, I know you built a house back there, and it, that was just an alley before we, I don't remember when that was dedicated to Railroad.
Right, so the, depending on the plat that you use.
Yeah.
The section parallel to Mound Avenue was platted as Railroad Street.
Okay.
The segment between Mound Avenue and Railroad Street, depending on the plat, the new plat shows Railroad Street. The original plat that, I think it's like from 1879, something like that, listed that segment as alley. However, there's now a Railroad Street sign at the end of that portion. Uh, so, I felt like that was settled, that that was now considered a...
Is there, is that actually a dedicated stra- I know it's got a street sign, but that doesn't necessarily...
I think that was brought to council or whatever, that yes, because I know it has to be maintained. I think garbage and snow plowing, that kind of thing. It's a street? Or was that just a argument?
I know that at least part of the argument was that it's illegal to have a residence whose only access is via an alley. It has to be a roadway. Uh, so that was part of the dedication of the pavement as being a roadway. I know moniker-wise, it's always been referred to as the alley. There's, uh, 12 residences with a direct connection to that roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and 13 addresses, because one of them's a duplex. Um, so I don't know if that makes any difference or not, but those, those were the concerned parties with the construction and whether or not it was going to be handled a certain way. Um, because with an alley, there's easements that are different than roadways. Everything was held to a roadway standard for his construction. And I had an issue with, uh, some, a hedge line that was too close to the road. Had it been an alley, I wouldn't have been required to cut back the hedge line, but because it was a road, I was required to cut it back. Is what it was, is what was explained to me by the city manager's office. That was under a previous city manager, but
Yeah.
that was the interpretation at the time.
And just from my own, uh, wha- are you asking any, or are you just kind of making us aware of this?
Well, so, my, two primary requests for this evening would be, one, Railroad Street is not listed on the city of Milford's website. So to go through the normal means of, uh, requesting repair to a pothole or property damage or something like it, it's not selectable. So, to your point, counselor, that the, is it a road, is it an alleyway? I was under the understanding was settled, but it's not selectable as a roadway listed within the city limits of Milford. So I would like that to be available. And then, two, um, I guess I would implore the council but also specifically the location of the, of the roadway. On run would be that it be, I just don't want it to be ignored.
Sure.
Understood. Um, i- i- if you would, just give me some time to review this internally, and we'll get you a, a response by the end of the week, and maybe it'll... That way I can get caught up to speed and, and we can go from there.
Sounds good. That's all I'd ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Anyone else would like to make a co- uh, comment?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I do have, uh, um, one thing I would like to discuss during public comments unless anyone else wants to go. Okay. Uh, I have a, a special guest, Kate Albert, um, back in, in the audience. I, I had the opportunity to meet with, um, both herself and Andrea Brady from the Chamber of Commerce to discuss that of the mural that's in conjunction with the America 250. Uh, previously, the, the mural had been, um, slated to, to be painted or, or, um, produced in the, uh, parking lot next to Harvest Market. Uh, after further review, and, and please let me know if I misspeak, um, after further review, um, when looking at the runoff, the material of that retaining wall and some of the, the other variables associated with it, it was determined that that was not the most feasible location for that mural. Um, so, we, we had a meeting to discuss alternative options, and one of the options, and, and this is, I guess, I, I'm presenting this to council to get some, some feedback and, and better guide us, uh, would be that of the bathrooms at Five Points. So, it would be solely just on the brick. It would stay above the stone and, you know, above the, um, I believe it's sited, um, at, towards the top of the peak. Um, but that was one of the areas that we had discussed, and, uh, I just wanted to get council's thoughts. I know we, at one point, have discussed that of extending that building or making an addition to that building, which would prohibit us from utilizing one of the sides of the bathrooms, but, um, I just wanted to, to run that by council, and, and Kate's here to answer any specifics related to the mural and, and anything that, uh, I can't answer, but wanted to get council's thoughts, and, and if that's a good location, great. If not, then we can pursue other, uh, other options.
So get, where? In between the bathroom?
So, it would be on the bathroom building itself, so that the walls that face the park.
Yes.
And the wall that faces Main Street. It'd be on both sides.
Okay.
Just trying to picture.
And, and this isn't, it's going to happen tomorrow. I, I just want to see if council's in agreement with that, if new drafting, uh, what that mural looks like, and we can keep moving down that path. Otherwise, we'll look for an alternative location.
Can I have Kate come on? I got a couple of questions, too.
Let's just say, does anybody remember the potential second phase of the community center? Did it, so the bathroom doors face Main Street. So if you were going to wrap it, is it going to be wrapped someplace where the potential, or was that going to be a second freestanding building? I just don't remember what the original second phase, the community center was.
I thought it was to extend the current building and be connected to it, but to your point, I, it's getting a little fuzzy as to what was, was talked about.
Based off of my observation, it looked like it was one building. So it was, it was an addition. Now, obviously, I was not here during the discussions, but, but based off of the renderings I've seen, that, that was my observation.
Any recall on how it pit extended?
Not for me. No, sorry.
I was just curious.
But I, realistically, though, that doesn't say that that's what has to be done. I mean, we obviously don't have the funds to do what the original plans, and the, the money we're getting from the state is not enough to even do that. But my, I guess my question to Kate, um, when you made the presentation, this is in conjunction with the 250, right?
Yeah, it was, it was initially, um, started by plans to do this mural in conjunction with others as part of America 250 next year. Um, and I wanted to point out, um, that Mr. Gunderson had said that if it's possible to do it on one side of the wall, that's also totally fine. Um, and then there was something else that I just thought of this afternoon. Uh, Miami Township, as you know, installed one of the, or is installing one of these murals at Community Park. Um, and the way that they're doing that is they're printing it on a vinyl that can be adhered to the back wall of this activity center that they're building. Um, another proposal I was going to say is that if you really want it to be at that original location down there by Harvest Market, behind the parking lot, there might be a way for us to secure some panels or something that we could, um, attach to the wall and print a vinyl piece to wrap around that panel. Um, and that's just something that I could, that's something that I could mock up easily for you. Um, I did put a call into National Fitness Campaign, who is responsible for the project at Community Park, to see if that's something that they can do, or if I can at least find out how they do that, the logistics, and maybe an estimated cost. Maybe we can find somebody here more local.
And then, cost-wise, did we have, I, I remember it was discussed, but I don't know that we, yeah.
Yeah, for, let me just pull up my cell sheet here.
Yeah, that might have been a preliminary cost.
So, yeah, so the, Andrea Brady has better figures on all of this. The total project cost, we estimated to be around $35,000, um, with grant money coming from, uh, Claremont County CBB and Claremont Connect. Um, and then I believe the city of Milford had committed, um, under the old city manager, um, $5,000.
That's the kind of figure. That, that, that's what I was kind of getting at. That was under that person's purview. Now, Mr. Gunderson's purview, under the $7,500 limit, but I believe that's what was originally discussed.
Yeah, and, and there are opportunities here, I think, to seek sponsorship, sponsorship, um, and talking about the QR code and links to, um, maps that'll, you know, be aligned with the businesses in, on downtown Main Street, um, and maybe around, uh, Milford. Um, this, there are, you know, multiple opportunities, I think, to raise money to fill in the gaps.
And is this still online or feasible, that it's going to be in conjunction with the 250 celebration? Is that the, the goal, I guess?
Yes, so the goal, the goal, the hope is to have everything, have the stars align over the next few weeks or month or so, hopefully here. Um, and I'm in the preliminary stages of the artwork, just waiting for, um, approval from Mule, um, to be able to produce the artwork. And I think that I can get that going and finished within a couple of months, and then as the weather warms up, that's when we can start, uh, making this happen.
Is that the same time, how, because the Township one is pretty far along, my understanding correct?
Um, yeah, so the painting for that was completed back in November.
Okay.
Um, there was an unveiling at the Civic Center, and so everything there is good to go. Um, they, it's just a matter of the elements to make that start happening.
So, between the, the potential options that you talked about, between painting it, you know, on the building in Five Points, or the panels and the vinyl wrapping and going where it was originally proposed, from a durability standpoint, in your opinion, are those both about, are we going to get the same bang for our buck out of both options?
I believe so. Um, it's, I think it's good that it's facing south and east rather than north and west in terms of weathering for that building, so that's definitely a plus. Um, and having it printed on vinyl, if that's the route that you want to go, um, the benefit to that is if there's any, you know, case of vandalism or anything like that, it can be easily printed, reprinted and replaced. So there's really benefits to both spots. Um, the wall at Five Points also is, I haven't done the measurements, but I believe it's about 30 or 40% smaller square footage-wise, so there would be cost savings there also.
Anyone else have a question? Thank you.
Sure.
Um, I, we need to kind of, though, let's talk about this a little more.
Yeah.
If we don't have any other questions for you, I'd like you to be able to sit down rather than stand there, unless you'd like to sit. That's up to you.
And, and I'm not necessarily seeking, uh, if we can't make a decision tonight, then that's fine. I, I just wanted to run that by council, and, and we can discuss that a later date, but we, we just had the meeting, and I was, I wanted to make sure that I discussed it while it was fresh and fully know that, you know, this, this is, I think, a good opportunity. It's just, how does council feel?
Sure.
I could do pros and cons on both, but the, the park, actually, to me, is a, probably a better location, I think. You know, just as opposed to that solid wall down there, just because of visibility and, and, but I, like I said, I could also see where that wall would, could potentially be a benefit down there.
Does it make sense to have Kate investigate panels and then get with Benjamin?
I think that would be good, where we kind of look at both options. I think that also gives us time to have Mayor Evans and Ms. Chamberlain, um, involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I, I let you sit down too early. I knew, I knew at some point tonight I was going to make a mistake, and that was it.
One other thing that we mentioned in the meeting was that, um, having it in a parking lot down on Main Street is all well and good, and I do agree that that wall does need sprucing up, and I'm happy to help facilitate that as well. Um, but I think the idea of actually having it within the community at Five Points Park would be more impactful within the community. I mean, people are, people are coming to Milford, you know, as a tourist location, and I think that that has been established. Um, everybody that comes into our shop says what a wonderful place Milford is, and there's, you know, really no hiding it. Um, and I think it would be a nice opportunity to put Five Points Park on the map and bring tourists up that way as well. Um, Dora extends that far, and we have events through the summer, and, um, I just think that would be a great location. Um, and one other thing I want to say is from a, a workforce standpoint, it would be, um, much easier and cost-effective to be able to utilize that building for storing supplies throughout the summer, um, and actually, we would actually be pretty well shielded from the elements, uh, in that location as well, rather than that hot solar panel in the parking lot. Yeah.
See that, too. I, I like the idea of kind of pulling people up to Five Points since, you know, it is our...
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm still more than happy to reach out. Like I said, I put a, a call and an email into National Fitness Campaign to see what their cost would be. So I'm happy to at least follow through on that, and, um, then that's just one more thing you can throw in there for consideration.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other members of the public like to make a comment? All right, seeing none. Uh, moving on to, uh, we have no standing committee reports at this, this time. Next up is city manager report. Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. To, uh, start the city manager report, uh, city staff met last week with, uh, McGuire Iron and Branstadter as a pre-construction meeting for the Wallace Avenue Water Tower. Uh, that was a very productive meeting and is a good first step into, um, getting that, that water tower created and, and installed, so, um, more to follow on that. Uh, staff also held a phone call with Raftillis to discuss the, the idea of conducting a rate study for utilities, uh, water, sewer and stormwater. Uh, Raftillis has submitted a proposal and is currently under review by staff. Uh, we posted another office hours with the city manager, uh, just giving, uh, giving, excuse me, a in-depth explanation on the recent increases for the upcoming February water bill. Uh, council member Chamberlain and I attended the OKI luncheon on January 28th. Uh, staff also attended the Convention of Visitors Bureau presentation regarding existing sports facilities throughout the county. I, I think that was a very productive, um, discussion, and it was how can we attract more sporting events, tournaments, and, and upgrade our facilities? With, uh, Finley Ray being a, a prominent facility throughout the county, uh, we were able to sort of compare and contrast against other utility, or other facilities and, and determine what, what is needed for us to stay competitive. Uh, staff also attended a meeting with the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce to discuss future collaboration opportunities. And lastly, uh, city, uh, the city will be posting the job opening for the Water Department Supervisor position later this week. Unless there's any questions, that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gunderson. Next up is the police report. Chief Mills.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. I'm still working on our January monthly report, but I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Anyone?
Well, that was easy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next up, fire and EMS.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Uh, we put our new EMS in service a couple of weeks ago, so it's actually working very well. People like it, and it's, it's working out good for us. Next week, we're going to start our annual physicals for all of our members, so that's something we do every year, a full physical for everybody. And lastly, is we're doing the Fire Command training this week of our every third year, uh, recertification through Blue Card, so all members are going through that. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving right along. Next up is council comments. Any members at council like to make a comment?
I'd just like to talk a little bit about, uh, former mayor Fred Albrecht. Uh, he passed after, uh, a short but unfortunately detrimental, uh, incident. But anyone who knew Fred, and, uh, he had a short tenure here and served as mayor for a couple of years also, but he was, uh, certainly a, uh, a true advocate for this community at the time he was here. I think he left a lasting impression, anyone who had the opportunity to meet with Fred, so I just wanted, uh, really just to, the accolades of him serving, you know, we all serve for different reasons. Fred came to this community, uh, and, and really instilled a great sense of professionalism at the time, and his, you know, I, personally, he, uh, left a lasting impression on me, just on his, uh, ability to communicate, to coach with people. Uh, uh, we talk a lot about mentors in life, and he was certainly one of those gentlemen who, uh, I think has left a lasting impression on this community and a lot of people who ever had the opportunity to work with him.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Velardo. Anyone else?
Then I, then I would also like to make a, a motion for an executive se- session pursuant to Section 3.05, one of the city, Milford City Charter for the sole purpose to consider the appointment, employment, motion for compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the, the public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual request a public hearing.
Sir Vice Mayor, if I may, I, I would also ask that council considers, um, allowing me to invite Director Dave Walker into the executive session.
I will amend my motion to include that.
Second.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Okay, and just as a note, we will be returning to regular session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right, and then next up on the agenda, um, I'd actually like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Jackie, would you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Parrish.
Yeah, uh, here.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right, first up on agenda for committee of the whole meeting is public comment. Do we have anyone from the comment that would like, or public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, uh, we will move on to items referred to committee of the whole. Looks like first up, we have a discussion about the Terricon Remedial Action Plan Development Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This was the, uh, same agreement that was presented at the committee of the whole last meeting, uh, with the exception of I, I am requesting for an ordinance to be drafted to, to approve this. Uh, once again, this is the parking lot that is over by Harvest Market. Um, there are some issues with the soil underneath the road, and, uh, that needs to be remediated, so we are going to submit a action plan, uh, through Terricon to the, uh, to the state, um, seeking approval for remediation. So this is simply to allow me to, um, work with Terricon to submit that.
Do you have a co- I mean, there's no cost right now, or do you need a, a dollar?
The cost is, um, $9,000.
Oh, okay.
My apologies. Um, that is just simply to submit the, the proposal. That is not the remediation cost.
I didn't think so, okay.
So as a, as a friendly reminder, they, they've got, I believe it's, um, 30 to 60 days or 30 to 45 days, the state does, once we submit the plan for approval. And then the typical, um, process that is followed thereafter is we have one year to complete that remediation, um, or remedial effort.
So you need a, um, motion to authorize you to spend, uh, what did you say it was, $9,000?
$9,000, that's correct.
$9,000 for Terricon for, uh, remedial action plan development agreement. Is that something to that effect?
Yeah.
Authorize the, the law director to draft an ordinance for such.
Second. Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right. Next up, uh, Milford Police Department, 2025 Capital Improvement Projects. Chief Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, and I promise to have a lot more to say this time at the podium. I'm before you tonight, uh, requesting your permission for a total of five ordinances, but it's essentially for two projects. One project is the, uh, Flock cameras, which I presented to you during our budget presentations. And the other four ordinances are essentially for two replacement cruisers and related equipment. So if you'd like, I can start going down the list, and if you have any questions?
Um, I do have a couple of questions before you go down the list, simple, uh, around Flock cameras. Um, can you tell me how many requests for Flock data Milford, uh, Police Department made from surrounding agencies in the last year?
Oh, no, I don't have, um, I would, I'd guess three or four, but that's just anecdotally.
Okay.
Um, the problem with that is, and that's a very fair question, one of those involved, uh, a Tyler Avenue resident, uh, in the early stages of undiagnosed dementia that, uh, we later found out left his house at 3:00 AM. At 7:00 AM, we realized he was missing, um, and started the, the search. The son was frantic. Again, this was an undiagnosed, but we started to see signs of that. So we reached out to one of our neighbors, who within an hour or so was able to give us a couple of locations, which reassured us that he was headed back to Milford. But in other cases, I'm told that we've left voicemails or called surrounding agencies, and it's been a day or two before they got back to us, and especially when it comes to missing persons, every minute counts.
Sure. Um, so, also kind of reading about these and kind of, uh, the pros and cons of these. If you had to put a percentage on crime reduction in Milford that these might bring, what percentage would, would you say that this is going to reduce crime in Milford?
Um, you know, I haven't thought about that. For me, it's more about, um, so just to explain how it works. The, um, the, the hit list, or that's not the name they call it, um, hot list, alerts, are only given to us if it's something that's in NCIC, that's the National Crime Information Center, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, or Amber Alerts. So I pulled some numbers. In the past two years, we've had 22 missing person reports. Fortunately, we found all of them. Uh, but you may have noticed that, uh, last Friday was the 16th anniversary of Charles Jones, who's been missing since 2009. Flock technology wasn't around back then. Had it been, we would have got a lot more leads and potentially found him by now. So that's our biggest concern. As you're aware, Milford has a large elderly population, so it's not uncommon for us to have a resident that wanders and then becomes confused. We actually find quite a few here from other communities. Last weekend, we had that happen. A South Milford resident took us half a shift. They found her in Columbus. We entered her into NCIC. If we had access to Flock data, which we don't, that's the real advantage, because we don't have access to it. We're beholden to other partners that may or may not be able to run them for us. But yeah, not one hit because we didn't have access to the Flock cameras in that particular case. In terms of crime reduction, last year, we did a lot better. We only had three stolen vehicles, but two of those were Mike Castres' and he was not happy about that. He now pays for a monitoring service. But the year before, we had eight. And we've all seen the news stories. Those crews are not slowing down. They're very difficult to catch. A lot of times, they're juveniles. So I do believe, once the word gets out, that would definitely have an impact, but I'd hate to give you an estimate right now. I really just haven't wrapped my head around that. It's a good question, though.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to get those out before I forgot what I wanted to ask. So thank you. Thank you for indulging me. If you want to continue, that's.
But while we're talking about Flock cameras, my understanding is most of our surrounding communities have Flock cameras, correct? And then we would also have that, an instant access
We would.
to all those for whatever, you know, crime or, to your point, if it gets hit in, you know, two miles up the road and then they get notified, we would also get notified that potentially that they're, that person or persons of interest is coming into our community.
That's correct. That's exactly how that works. One thing I think is important to mention is part of being a Flock agency is having the transparency portal on your website. So I pulled Miami Townships off and I found this very interesting. It explains, and this is accessible by the public, what's detected, license plates and vehicles. What's not detected, facial recognition, people, gender, race, traffic, or vehicle speed, and it's not connected to any databases. In other words, if I'm driving down Main Street and I pass a Flock, it doesn't say Jamie Mills is passing a Flock camera. Just my license plate is recorded and held for 30 days. And this is really for, after the fact, for a detective or an officer to go, hey, I'm looking for Jamie Mills. Let me run his plate. And then they could see where I was at for a period of about 30-day look back. There's an acceptable use policy. Data is used for law enforcement purposes only and is never sold to third parties. The prohibited uses, and this is directly from Flock, personal use, immigration enforcement, speed, traffic light, or stop sign enforcement, harassment or intimidation, usage based solely on protected class, for example, race, sex, or religion. I don't know the specifics, but we've probably all seen the story of a police officer, and we'll say Butler County was just arrested for abusing that. So there is a very strong audit trail and administrative rights, so we can look at, and that's indefinite. We can look back for a period of indefinite time and see the access that an officer's had to see if they're exceeding the standard use. So I can assure you, we will monitor this as strictly as we do our body cameras and our other databases. They're all full of sensitive data.
So we need a motion to draft an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Flock cameras in the amount of $27,000 for the installation of nine cameras.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
No.
Okay, moving on. The other capital improvement project is for two replacement cruisers and related equipment. That will culminate in four ordinances. There are two other vendors that are below the City Manager's spending limit that will not be before you in terms of an ordinance tonight, but the purchase for two Tahos from Lally Chevrolet in the amount of $104,056. And then going along with that, upfitting from Par Public Safety for both vehicles combined, $44,866. And then as we move into the MDCs, those are our mobile data computers. That's a price tag of $24,736 to the Regional Crime Information Center. That's just a standard replacement and that's actually 50% of the total cost. RCIC absorbs the other 50% of that purchase. And I'll also point out that these purchases are $43,825 under what we estimated back in December and what we budgeted.
All right. Do I need to make, can I make? Okay.
Really different than what you have now. Is that why the install cost is on there?
Yeah, we didn't intend to purchase Silverados last year. We just could not get Tahos. We were able to get Tahos this year, so that's why it's gone up.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to have the Law Director draft multiple ordinances, then read them verbatim. You need a Diet Coke moment? Okay. To purchase two replacement Chevy Tahos for patrol, to then outfit all the, oh, that was for $104,056, to outfit them through Par Public Safety, each unit at a cost of $22,433 each. Also graphics to Digimax for $4,048. And then is this all on the same, the regional crime?
Yeah.
Okay. And then continuing the outfitting from the Regional Crime Information Center for nine replacement MDCs at $24,736. And then to get those installed to Par Public Safety for $2,745. And then my understanding, then the body camera, is that a separate?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. That, to Motorola Solutions, kind of lumped it in as part of our, because it also includes dash cams. And as I previously explained, our current platform has expired. It's reached end of life. They're no longer servicing it. This will move us to the cloud and will negate the necessity for any servers going forward. And this server we have now, we purchased in 2017, so it makes the most sense to go to the cloud for all that data storage.
And are you good if I make that as all, okay. And then to include in that motion, the purchase from Motorola Solutions for replacement body cameras, in-car cameras, and including data storage for $36,723.15.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, do, okay, is there any? Oh, sorry, yes, did you have one more?
Yes, I have some other new business. I'd like to make a motion to have our Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a severance agreement.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Okay. Any other new business for the Committee of the Whole? Do I have a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
All right, so back in regular session. I don't see any new business that needs to come before Council. So next up will be ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Ordinance number 25-333, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with TERRICON Consultants, Inc. to prepare a remedial action plan in accordance with Buster Guidelines for the former Sowers Milford Marathon, Milford Marathon, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. By prior ordinance numbers 23-204 and 23-252, respectively, the Council of the City of Milford previously authorized the City Manager to enter into and execute agreements with TERRICON Consultants, Inc. for Tier 2 evaluation services at the former Sowers Milford Marathon for $16,850 and for further Tier 2 services costing $14,750 because the state Buster requested additional evaluations beyond that initial work, additional evaluations beyond that initial work. Excuse me. Buster Guidelines now require the preparation of a remedial action plan for which the city needs to retain TERRICON to provide professional services at a cost not to exceed $9,000. Accordingly, the City Manager is hereby authorized to enter into and execute a supplemental agreement with TERRICON for $9,000 to prepare a RAP for the former Sowers Milford Marathon site. The terms and conditions of this agreement are fully incorporated in their entirety as if fully rewritten herein pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-25-333, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with TERRICON Consultants, Inc. to prepare a remedial action plan in accordance with Buster Guidelines for the former Sowers Milford Marathon.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-334, an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to purchase two Chevy Tahos per state bid RSI 024953 and a contract with Par Public Safety Equipment for professional services to install emergency equipment for both Tahos, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The City Manager is hereby authorized to purchase two Chevy Tahos from Tim Lally Chevrolet for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $104,056 for both Tahos per the attached quote and state bid number RSI 024953. Under Section 11.09 of the Charter, competitive bidding is not required for these purchases because they're being made through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Nevertheless, in Council's judgment, these quotes offer the best and most responsive prices to the city considering quality, service, price, reputation, and past performance as financial condition, because this is the only way the city can purchase these necessary Tahos at the soonest possible time at this price. The quotes are fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Further, to outfit these Tahos for police use, the City Manager is authorized to contract with Par Public Safety Equipment for professional services to install emergency equipment in the Tahos for an amount not to exceed $44,867. Under Section 11.09 of the Charter, competitive bidding is not required for the purchase of these professional services. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-334, an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to purchase two Chevy Tahos per state bid RSI 024953 and a contract with Par Public Safety Equipment for professional services to install emergency equipment for both Tahos.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-335, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of nine cameras from Flock Group, Inc. for $27,000, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Flock Group, Inc. to purchase and install nine cameras throughout the city for $27,000. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated herein by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
No.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-335, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of nine cameras from Flock Group, Inc. for $27,000.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
No.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-336, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of replacement body cameras, in-car cameras, and data storage from Motorola Solutions for $36,723.15, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to purchase and to install replacement body cameras, in-car cameras, and data storage for the Police Department for $36,723.15. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated herein by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price? Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Excuse me. An ordinance number 25-336, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of replacement body cameras, in-car cameras, and data storage from Motorola Solutions for $36,723.15.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-337, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of mobile data computers from RCIC for $24,736.50, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the City Manager to enter into an agreement with RCIC to purchase replacement mobile data computers for the Police Department for $24,736.50. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-337, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of mobile data computers from RCIC for $24,736.50.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-338, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement, a severance agreement and general release between the City of Milford, Ohio and Joe Castile, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the City Manager to execute the severance agreement and general release with Joe Castile. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-338, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement and general release between the City of Milford, Ohio and Joe Castile.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pacheco. Lastly, on our agenda this evening is old business. Does anybody have any old business we need to discuss? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.